Would like to call the Groton Board of Ed regular meeting to order. It's August 27th. And our first order of it, uh, wow. I'll try this sentence one more time. Slow down. Uh, the first called order is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you please stand with the flag? Dan, would you like to serve us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice at all.
And I take it we do not have any delegations or visitors today?
No.
No, because we'll do that.
We have some guests who'd like to give us a little feedback from about the Apex program.
Right, but that's already in our agenda.
Right, that's on the agenda.
Okay. Um, so the next part is comments from citizens. And it's about agenda items or other subjects of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. And citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments from citizen portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the podium and state their names and addresses for their record. Is there anyone, Mr. Onda has signed up?
No.
Is there anyone from the audience?
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shanakas at Parkway, Groton. I'm just once again wanted to reach out and state my strong support for this community and this Board of Ed to consider a junior ROTC program at our local high school here. I think it's long overdue. I know I brought it up several times and I will continue to bring it up, as you know. I believe as we, you know, as I read the article in the paper today, as we start to push for all this IB and all these other programs that are for, you know, students and children pursuing the college track, I think it's very important that we continue to provide services for students that are going into secondary or some type of continuing training like the military. Being that we are a Navy community, I feel it would be, you know, welcomed. I've actually spoken to several military families and they're shocked that we do not have such a program here. Um, I know that we do get funding for military children in our school district and it's, it comes in the form of a grant and possibly there might be some funding where we can start to at least get the ball rolling. So I would like to see this eventually make it to some new business on your agendas and start the process of starting to seek funding and, and, and finding somebody to facilitate that program. Also in regards to the magnet schools for Cutler and Westside. In the article, it stated that Westside would have the state-of-the-art engineering program. And once again, some questions arise after going to all the meetings and looking at my own student's schedule. I'm having trouble seeing what's really setting Westside apart being the magnet school. According to his schedule in particular, he's taking his normal mainstream classes. There's nothing on there like Engineering 101. So I think there needs to be some more information possibly out. I know they have the open houses and such, but how are we incorporating that into the curriculum? And what is that going to look like? Is that just after-school enrichment programs? Or during, you know, their SRBI, whatever they call it at the different schools? So I think there needs to be some more information regarding that because the schedule that I'm looking at, I am not seeing anything that's setting his schedule apart from last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Portia. Are there anyone else from, is there anyone else from the audience? Not hearing any moving to response to citizens and Dr. Gannier. Can, can you speak a little bit about her, um, the second concern about Westside and the STEM program? Or do you need to get more information?
Well, I think what, I just wrote a note. I think what, what we need to do is be very clear because I, what I don't want to do is give a partial list. That what, what the paper spoke about was Project Lead the Way. And all the children will be getting Project Lead the Way in their STEM class. But what I'd like to do is do a kind of comprehensive, talk about the partners we have and what, why that program is, is different than the Cutler program in terms of STEM.
Okay. Would that make sense then for us to put that on a new business item for like the televised meeting? To have a conversation about that?
Sure. Yeah, actually in September 24th, maybe what we could do is have the coordinators and the principals in and they could perhaps do a little sideshow on what, what makes each school so unique.
That would be, that would be great. And then also, has there been moved, any movement with the ROTC? Because I know that Ms. Bordelon is correct. This is not the first time that she has brought us to the, to our attention.
I, I've spoken to the National Junior NROTC and it, it would be a, a major budgetary impact, but I'll get to the, I'll get to the details. The, the Navy has it that after a couple of years, they will pick up some of the salaries if the program thrives. But for the first couple of years, it's about 200, 250 to 300,000 dollars. So I think it's a great idea, but we would have to go, it'd be a major budget. And, and a fellow in the Navy was straight with me. He said, you know, we, we don't know that, that, there are, there are two kinds. There's a, there's a fully funded and, and board-funded programs, two separate ones. And you, you must start as a board-funded program. So that'd be, like I say, be about 250 to 300,000. But without a promise, it'd only be, but let me get my notes and I'll make a presentation.
So if it's okay with the other board members, I'll put it on the committee of the whole so that we can have a further discussion on the ROTC?
Yeah, sure.
I would like to make a referral for both of those so that we don't lose track of this.
Yep.
And have it at one of our future ROTC, especially since we're going to be doing the budget in the fall.
Yep. Yep. And, and I think it's also something that we probably, the Board just needs to hear more about what the, what that entails. Having an ROTC. But then I would then want to kind of shoot it to the finance committee so that they can kind of take a look at the implications of that. And if we were to support that, where, where would we get those funding? So I.
And I also think it'd be great to contact New London because they have such a robust program, New London High School.
Well, maybe that can be part of the referral.
Oh, yeah. They have a very robust program with many students.
Maybe we could have someone come through New London.
Yeah, they have the Navy supporting them.
Yes, they do. Okay. All right. All right, we are on to the student representative report. Hello, 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 the two of you. Welcome back. Let me go early.
It's good to be back. Uh, I'd like to first start off by introducing the new student representative, Abby Clark. She is a junior at Fitch High School and she will be with you for the next two years. And now I will hand it off to her.
Hi. First, it's nice to meet any of you who I haven't met already. And I'll start it off with the freshman orientation. That was Thursday, August 23rd and Friday, August 24th this past week, where incoming freshmen were split up into groups with a teacher leader and a couple of upperclassmen volunteers. Incoming students visited different areas. They took tours, participated in different activities, viewed presentations and had their school picture taken. And then also first day of school is this, or next Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. And even though it is a Tuesday, it will not be an X-Block day. So, yep.
Okay. As we presented last June about the parking spaces, just a reminder that for all students, it is now a $10 fee to park at Fitch High School. You have to have your permit form in and fill out all your insurance, driver's license stuff. Hopefully by the first week of school, that's when they're going to start handing out the parking passes and assigning spots. And for $30, seniors can have the opportunity to paint their spots. We started last Friday and we also went into the weekend from 2:00 to 6:00. So if you go up to the top lot closest to the church, you can see some of the painting of the parking spots. I know Dr. Gannier showed me some pictures he received on his phone. So those were very exciting. And also, this is a couple of days old news, but we are adding another painting day. So we have two more painting days left for seniors who haven't painted yet. So it's next Sunday from 9:00 to 12:00, we will have another painting session. And then our regular scheduled third painting session, which is Saturday, September 8th from 2:00 to 6:00, which is also my birthday, so.
And it's a very good day.
Yes, it is.
September 8th.
Yes, it's a very good day. So that is in the senior news. Painting will, is prohibited during those times. We'd like, there has to be faculty presence during those times when students are painting for obvious reasons. And also, the senior class on September 2nd will be doing a fundraiser from 1 to 4 at Johnson's Hardware. So the seniors are kicking it off with a bang this year, getting their fundraisers going. And also, the Fitch Music Department, on my birthday again, is hosting a Royal Run at Bluff Point State Park. It's a three and a half mile run, two-mile walk. Registration is available online on the Fitch website. And there's also same-day registration. It's $25 to enter and $5 for the half-mile youth run that they're going to do in the beginning. The race will start at 10 o'clock and I believe it is $25 to participate. And also Fitch Athletics preseason practice is underway. And if you are still interested, please contact Mr. Romano at mromano@groton.k12.ctus if you would like to still participate. And a side note on the parking lot, if you have any questions, I can answer them now. But for people who are watching this at home or going to read the minutes, please contact Ms. McGuire at emaguire@groton.k12.ctus.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could you tell me where the, where the money, the fee money is going to be designated?
So for parking for everyone, it's $10 and that's a general fee for everyone. That money is going to go to the Renaissance Committee and they're going to be doing small projects throughout the school. So one of the projects they did is there's this little bin and it's supposed to be a place where flowers go, but you know, nothing really grows in there. And they recently just painted it with the school motto, "Achieve More, Believe More, Care More," going around. And they put rocks in it, so there's part of that. They also, I was in the bathroom during freshman orientation and I saw that they had painted on a, some nice encouragement words like in one, it said, "Nice shoes, you have nice shoes on today." So it's little projects throughout that, that that's going to be funding. And then the $30 to paint is going to go to the senior class.
That's great. I just want to make sure everybody knew it in the audience, out in the outer audience.
Thank you.
Lee. Did you say it's your birthday on September 8th?
It is my birthday.
Just in case everybody knew you say that?
I know, I'm going to be, I'm going to be very busy. I will be at the Marching Band Royal Run and then I will be painting at the parking lot, so.
Do you want a cake?
No, but I do. Because September 8th is also my birthday.
Oh, that's right. Me and, me and Ms. Watson are birthday buddies.
Right? Is it worth it?
Yeah.
Rosemary.
Um, since we're not going to be here as a group for your, for the recording, on your birthday, should we sing now?
No, thank you.
Right along with Rosemary. Anything else?
Yes, I do have one other thing. Um, could we maybe talk about the bottle fundraiser that we're doing for the band?
Yeah, so we are starting a new fundraiser that should hopefully go on for at least a year. It's a, it should be a bigger thing, but Rosemary collects a lot of bottles, which is very handy.
I've shamed Yale.
It's very handy because you can turn it in for money. So she has generously donated it to the Fitch Music Boosters for the London trip. So we are, and I think it's already happened. We picked up some of the bottles and exchanged it for some money. And that funds will be going into the Fitch Music Boosters. And hopefully we can grow this fundraiser and get a lot of money from your amazing hobby of collecting bottles.
And gets bottles off the street.
Yes.
Plus I'm asking everybody to pass the word around and to bring, maybe we can get a, a station at Fitch where we can bring them, so.
Sure.
Some empty room.
I'm sure. All righty. Anything else? Jay?
Two quick things. First of all, welcome, Patty.
Thank you.
We really appreciate the input from the students at the, at the board meetings. It's been invaluable. And speaking of which, Dan, could you just briefly tell us how this parking came into, this parking idea came into action?
So the parking lots started around last winter. We had noticed some, the Marine Science Magnet High School, they paint their spots. And some of students approached the, at the time, junior class officers about doing it. So we discussed it with our advisors. We thought it was a great idea and we decided, we presented the idea to Mr. Arco Reese first and he said, "Let's go and see, let's present it to the Board." And we ended up presenting it to the Board last May or June, I believe, at a committee of the whole meeting. And we ended up getting your approval. And then we went through with that. We made some changes we felt needed to be made. And we decided to go through with it. And it has been, we've had our ups and downs, but it's been turning out very well. I'm very happy with it.
Good. Thank you.
Great. So we're going to be moving on to superintendent's report. And I'm just, because I know that we have people who are going to be presenting or helping answer any questions. Instead, I'm going to do two first, which is going to be the Apex learning program update. And we should have, most people or all of us should have, have had that attachment in our packet. And also, we did have a committee of the whole meeting on the Apex. And so I don't know, Dr. Gannier, if you.
Well, I would, I would be happy if, if we could introduce Mr. Diskin, who knows more about this program than really anyone because he was the co-director of the summer school. And we used the Apex as a pilot for summer school. And I know he's brought a student with him. Thank you very much, Mr. Valentine. So maybe if you could just very briefly kind of give an overview and then if Raymond is willing to offer a few comments, that'd be great. And then maybe the Board can answer some questions.
Certainly. First, let me thank the Board for giving us the opportunity to pilot this program during the summer. It certainly was, was an exceptional experience to, to take lead in it. And also, I do want to mention that Mr. Romano was also part of the, the summer school program and he too was very involved in the process as well. Unfortunately, the sports have kept him from most of the, the meetings that we've had. And so the summer school program, I do want to leave that component to Raymond. He goes by Ray as well. He would, he's certainly very out, out forward with, with the responses that he's given. He's a straight, straight shooter. He's not going to give you anything that is not what, you know, not the truth. So any questions that you want from a, from a student that we shared at the previous meeting on, on August 13th, please do so when he comes up. In summary, we ran the summer school program for four weeks. The students met four times a day, four, excuse me, four times a week for two hours in which there was five teachers there for the core academics and one that used to work with the VLA program to support the students, primarily in the, in the core areas and also the elective courses. The students utilized the teachers quite often when they had a question during the two-hour sessions. And also, what the students also needed to do was also do work at home and strongly expected to do so. A pretty good percentage of them did finish before the four weeks. However, we did have some students, as indicated in the report, who were unfortunately not able to, to finish the, the course expectations. But we do want to let it be known that we want the students to know that they can continue upon, and they're, they're still working on it at this point in time. And, and if we move forward, we certainly are going to be talking to the students about continuing that so that they do not get penalized. We certainly understand that this was a pilot and we want the best for all the students that took the courses. Having said that, I am going to ask Raymond to come up here to speak to you a little bit about his experience. Unfortunately, the teachers, some of the teachers weren't able to be here as they're trying to get some rest before we, we return fully here to the 2018, 2019 school year. Thank you.
All right. Just want to thank you for letting me speak about the program. But with my experience, I think it was well. It helped me out through the course I was taking. I was taking geometry and I'm not the best with figures. I need real-life examples to be able to get like the diameter and area and stuff. And with the Apex program, they give you real-life examples instead of giving you examples that they would use in textbooks and stuff. And it, to me, it gave me information I needed to pass the class instead of extra information that would guide me a different direction than the one that I needed to be on. And for me, that's very helpful. Not everyone likes it that way. Some others need other information. Me, I just like the information I need to be able to take the testing quizzes. And for me, it helped out a lot.
Great.
I just, I love your voice. And, and you know, second time, not only just the tonality, but I just love what you got to say. And got to say, wow, that was really good English. We need the course. I need the course. But I also, your example about the basketball has actually stayed with me in terms of, I also am someone, like you have to make meaning in order for me to learn specifically math. You have to make, it has to make meaning for me. And so when you were talking about sort of the, the basketball, I, I actually was thinking about the circumference and the radius and stuff like that. So I really appreciate your example and thank you very much for willing to present. Is there anyone else from the Board? Andrea?
I just want to thank Raymond for coming up and explaining your perspective on Apex. And I wanted to assure the Board that we thoroughly vetted it before we made the recommendation to the Board. And, and that is, we had a webinar, we met with the people who represented Apex. We went to, Susan and I went to the high school and, and actually saw it in action. So it was thoroughly vetted and I fully support it.
Raymond, could you also explain how you were able to really finish quickly because of the way that you take the quizzes and the things that you didn't learn, that you didn't need to learn? You're able to go through so that it has that aspect of what they call compacting?
So the way they do it is they have units. I had seven units. My final seventh unit was the final exam, so I had six units. But each unit has about 10 to 12 sections. And each, and each section has, gives you two pages on what's going to go into the program. And then it has another section where it gives you 20 to 30 pages explaining and giving you examples on what you're going to go through on each quiz. And each unit had about six quizzes and the final test at the end of the unit. And with the information that it gives you, it's straight up with what you need on the quiz, no extra information. So it made the quizzes easy to pass. And just getting the teachers to unlock it was the only mess up.
Difficulty, yeah.
Other than that, you could finish this at home really quick if you just pay attention to it. It's not that hard, gives you your information and you should be able to pass the quizzes.
Jay?
I just want to thank you for coming out tonight. You and Mr. Diskin, I know you also came to our committee of the whole and we had an extensive conversation about this, besides this meeting. And we do appreciate the firsthand knowledge as we decide whether to go with the program.
And Ray, you might want to tell the Board what your future plans are. They'll be quite proud.
Oh, I'm already enlisted into the military, going into the Army. So I'm just waiting to graduate to go off to boot camp.
Great.
Wow. Good luck. Make us proud. Yeah.
Thank you.
So on the second, oh, did you have, I was just going to move us forward. So on the second page, Dr. Gannier, of this.
Oh, sorry.
It has the Apex sort of price quote. And I don't know if you want to work, to walk the Board through that?
Well, the, the first thing I want you to know is there is, last year we had a bill. We never exactly know how many students are going to be taking these courses. It's partly a reflection of students who do it for credit recovery. It's partly due to students who come to the central office for the alternative education program there. Did you, we, we were trying to hunt that number down. You remember what it was? Yes, from last year.
Yeah, it was 42, 42,500 last year. And it was about 60, 60 students.
Okay. So it, it is, it has been a kind of an amorphous number. And how many students did we say?
60.
60. So for 60 students, it, it costs about $42,000. This, this program would provide the opportunity for every student at the high school, 1,100 students, to take as many courses as they wish, which would include, as I, I said in the, somewhere around here, I hope. Maybe I did it in my.
In your board notes.
In my board notes. Credit recovery, unique courses. I actually visited the program also and I taught to two students who had never taken the class before and they were taking it the first time and they both got the credit. But very effective for intervention for SRBI, for our tutoring program, ELL program, SAT preparation courses. So it would, it would give, well, everybody an opportunity. I, I know Mr. Bremen, who's one of our tutors, our, Mr. Bremen is really a math tutor, right?
He does, that's his area, but he does cover.
Right. We had him in for the summer and he, he was really excited about the program because we could use it for, for just plain old tutoring. Whether a student is technically enrolled in a class or not, it'd be a nice tutorial support like Raymond said. So in order to, in order to pay for this, it would be about 60,000, 60,000. And so Ken and I checked the budget. There's about $20,000 in, in the budget. And there would, there, we would have to come up with an additional 40. So we, we talked about that. And one of the areas that I'm happy to report, there seems to be some unexpendable balances in the transportation account. There's about 60, 60,000. So if the Board chose to do this, it, it could be funded from that account. It could also be funded from, from other accounts. It's like last year where, where we got the 42,000. It, it came from the operating budget as we're now. But obviously, $42,000 for 60 students compared to 59,8 for 1,100 students. I just like the idea of everyone being able to. I just like the idea of everyone being able to take an SAT prep course. I think that'd be terrific.
Can I also add that with the, some of the new laws on alternative education, that this could be a big support for that as well?
Thank you.
And for our VLA, what we used to call the VLA, which is housed at central office in our expelled students?
Which is called Virtual Learning Academy?
Right, Virtual Learning Academy. Instead of that, this seems to be a much more dynamic program, interactive, and that it would really, I think, encourage, especially the way Raymond talked about kids who can pre-test and they can move on, it, I think it's a catalyst for, you know, it really supports their learning.
Thank you. Andrea, then Jay?
The other thing I wanted to point out was that this is not simply for students who need to catch up, this is, it could provide enrichment courses and AP courses, and you can move really further along. This spans everybody.
Jay?
I was just going to mention the enrichment opportunities, so, in other words, they could take a course that isn't currently offered, and do we foresee being able to give them credit for that?
We do.
Okay.
We do. It actually, I know this is relevant to you, it could actually unclog a conflict. Can't take French and band, but now it can take band and online French, and then next year, jump into regular French. But, you know, Raymond's experience with geometry, which is not an easy course to necessarily for a lot of students to process, but the learning experience, it's kind of a Khan Academy environment where Raymond would look at videos like that. It's a wonderful opportunity, I think, for students, and from my perspective, I'd love to see kids take at least one online course because so many, I had taught to undergraduates all the time who were taking all of their courses online, but the trick is, as Raymond knows, it's discipline. You have to actually do it, and no one, you know, there's no teacher in front of you saying you've got to do it. So, I think it's a great opportunity to introduce kids to this online learning environment, which is not going away.
Jose?
I'm curious about the incomplete courses. Have we made a determination of time limit or if, what they're going to do?
And can you do your answer at the podium? Thank you, Adam.
So, out of the eight that I mentioned last time, two are making progress, so they're just simply taking a little longer with their understanding of the concept, but they're moving along. The other six courses will be continuing. There was efforts to communicate with the families, to engage them. Unfortunately, there was messages left, but the best thing about it is that moving forward, they have the opportunity to still complete the work, which, you know, in across the board, we don't know what different students are dealing with, what's going on, and it certainly is worthwhile for them to, when they return, for us to say to them, here's an opportunity in addition to your normal schedule here, we'd like for you to continue this course that you started, and that's six students. Hopefully, they come back to us, maybe that's something that's going on too. I don't know really the true factors impacting that, why there's no progress, but that is something we plan on having in place to support the students.
Thank you. Jay, then, most, Andrea?
If I can just clarify, lest anybody think this means that teachers are going away. The reason that there's these locks is that they go through a quiz, my understanding. So, if there's a challenge there, they can conference with the teacher, overcome that challenge before they take the test, and so that's why there are these checkpoints that have to be unlocked. It's not as though no teachers are involved. I mean, they're still, it's almost like the flipped classroom, right? So, they're doing all the study, and then they reach a roadblock, they conference with their teacher.
Exactly.
So, the teachers are still very much involved.
Yes.
Andrew? Excuse me, Andrew, I'm going to do Rita, because I have three questions.
My first is, how many teachers were involved in the summer school?
So, for the supervision piece, there was five, five teachers altogether. They were all going, they all went through the training component of it, and they were there for, not only to monitor their progress, but also be there to answer any questions that they may have, and spend that one face-to-face time with the student.
And how will that work during the school year if students are taking a lot of different classes such as an SAT prep or a unique course? Who would be involved in doing that, and would teachers have to go for special training?
So, there would be a level of training that we would have to do. I've already reached out to the company in anticipation, one way or the other, to at least have some dates where there is the opportunity for some teachers to at least begin training, especially if we're going to run it for the replacement VLA program.
Right.
Eventually, though, there is a learning curve. We can't just, you know, put people in situations, and certainly, we would have to train people. I myself am willing to be part of that. Mr. Romano and some of the teachers that are involved this summer, they love it so much, in truth, that they want to be involved with this. So, it would be a matter of organizing, planning it, and making sure that it does happen, at least for the most needed programs that we start with, and then eventually move it into better, the rest. One of the most important ones we talked about was the tutorial piece. That is, it's in the budget there, the quote of twenty-six thousand dollars, but that is one of the pieces that we didn't experience this summer, and is going to be a tremendous benefit for all students so that you can do differentiated instruction in a sense where students can focus on the specific areas that they need rather than just, as Raymond said, on something else that they don't, they understand already, or they don't need it for that specific question. So, there would be a plan, place, you know, a place so that we could make that happen.
And sometimes, at summer school, we have auto district students who come and take a class, but there'd be a fee for them to enroll?
It is something that we, this year, for example, we did have a fee for them as well. It's something that probably would happen in the future. The enrollment this year certainly increased for our students and decreased for the out-of-district students. We had very few, although we, one was a very unique situation, excuse me, where they just wanted to take it as an enrichment course. They simply wanted to strengthen their math skills before they went on to the next level. Another one was purely a unique situation where they wanted to advance and move forward.
And then, my third question is, would middle school students be able to be involved with this? You know, would, if we have these licenses, and if they're not, we have enough students in our high school, could it then be brought down to the middle school? I'm thinking specifically of the SAT prep and some of the other courses.
It was, I had a discussion with the representative today.
Oh, you did? Oh, good, I was going to say. I don't know.
And so, what you see in front of you right now is for nine through twelve for the year. I did open a discussion to, what would it be for the middle school? And what they do is they count the percentage of students that it is, and it would be a matter of adding a few dollars or X dollars to it to include the middle school population. But for this year, what we have here, it's simply for nine through twelve, any student within that. But it is the opportunity to, once we develop this and make it something robust at the high school, make it something that we discuss next year and open it up to the middle school for that purpose exactly.
Thank you, Adam.
I'll pursue that, Rita, that's a great question.
I just have one last comment, and that is, you can't take away the teacher and me. What I like about this is that it addresses specific learning styles, and I think the most pleasant thing that you said, Raymond, was, it's the way I learn, so I think that's so important.
I just thought of one more thing.
We've always paid to have summer school teachers, so we have five teachers, so we'd be paying for the five summer school teachers again with the additional cost of this program.
For next year?
Yes.
Summer school. You know, that's something that we talked about as far as refining, maybe perhaps retuning because of the learning that we did with the pilot. There was some opportunity to redo how we do summer school for next year. There were some great lessons learned this year, and certainly, we're going to improve for that and next year.
And they weren't there all five. I thought that they were, they rotated, so like, we had, the department chair, Kate Kennedy was there for a couple days, I think maybe she made in a third day in some cases.
But some teacher always needs to be there to unlock the program.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, and it can be done from a distance, too, as long as, there was a lot of email communication with myself, there's still going, ongoing right now. Mr. Diskin, please unlock this section, I'd like to redo it. So, there is that opportunity, you don't have to physically be there for that situation.
That's great, thank you.
All right, and so we will be having this come to a vote in probably ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. Alliance School update? Or Alliance District?
The Alliance District grant officially, when Susan and I met with the Alliance office, they said there is no money associated with it, but I got a phone call last week from the other district. There's only two districts that are not yet, of the thirty-three, Groton and Thompson are not getting any money. And so, she and I are sort of waging a little campaign, and we think, I'll let you know in my board notes, we think we have a meeting on Friday with the commissioner, and we're basically going to say, you know, we understand our responsibilities as an Alliance District, but without any money, it sure is difficult to monitor the attendance. Actually, both Thompson and Groton would love to hire a social worker to really take a look more carefully at the attendance, but we have tutoring programs, we have technology, we have lots of work that needs to be done, and when the commissioner came up with six-hundred-thousand dollars last year, it was terrific, but apparently, there's nothing, there's no allocated money from the legislature, that's for sure. The reason for that is because Groton did not get an increase in their ECS. We were held harmless, so of course, Groton still gets twenty-five million dollars, fortunately, but it would have, they would have had to gone above and beyond the twenty-five million, which they did not do. So, the fund of money would really be in the commissioner's hands, and I'll report back as soon as possible.
Thank you. Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent's report on the Summer Writing Project.
Okay, I'd like to ask, invite Val Nelson up to the podium. She's actually got a special report. We had a wonderful week with our writers, our summer writers, K-8, and I was able to get over there, Dr. Ackerman was able to see it in action, and we were all so pleased with the enthusiasm, and the writing itself was amazing. So, I'll let you talk a little bit about some of the facts.
Okay, you all have a little report in your handout, but this was our third year, and it's funded by a Department of Defense literacy grant, and we did it, the last two years was an AM and PM session for four days. The first year we did it, we did it over two weeks, two different sessions, but because school has been going so late because of all the snow days and delays, we felt we didn't want to go after the Fourth of July. So, this year, we did an AM session, a PM session, we had two-hundred-and-ninety students. We had quite a few students who, parents had said they wished they'd come, but they'd already made vacation plans because it was so late in the year. But last year, we had two-hundred-and-seventy-eight, so we had an increase in the number of students who came, and the average class size was about nine students, and I think the thing that was really special that I found that, besides the learning that took place, was you couldn't tell where anybody was from. It wasn't the Charles Barnham groups, the Butler groups, everybody mingled it together and had a great time. It was just a really, really positive experience. I think you'll see that, and the parents, we sent out surveys, we had one-hundred-and-seventy-nine parent surveys returned, and all one-hundred-and-seventy-nine parents said their child enjoyed the camp, and they would send their child again, which I think is pretty positive. The only suggestions were that they wished we had run it longer. And the teachers had fun, the students had fun, but I think one of the comments that really resonated with me was the fact that some of the children came because their parents made them come, and they didn't want to come, and they ended up feeling so proud of their writing, and that's what we really wanted them to do, to be proud of what they can do and know that they can be a writer, and that was what we heard over and over again, I'm a writer, I'm a writer, and that was what made it special. You saw the, on the handout, these different students that attended from each school, and we had a little bit different, we provide busing. The grant provides busing for Charles Barnham, Mary Morrison, who did PV last year, and Westside to go pretty much door-to-door if you're a bus student. The other students, we have school pickup, so they're picked up at their home school. This year, we decided to add a bus stop in Branford Manor to accommodate CK and CC students, so that helped with the Clive Chester, I mean, the, I think, Konecki enrollment. But it was a great experience, and there was a bulletin board outside in central office that has some samples of the writing, and thank you, Dr. Ackerman, for visiting.
It was fabulous.
Shall I say no?
Sure.
I was astounded by the quality of writing. Kids, tiny little kids that stood up and read their, what they had written, and it was, again, astounding to see the level of thinking and the quality of the writing, just the child coming alive in what he said, and I'm skeptical, skeptic, never mind.
We got it.
Thank you.
You have grave doubts.
I have grave doubts, thank you, and I think deep thoughts about these things, but, because writing is really my concern and my passion for children, and what you have done, Val, is this, and what the kids did.
The teachers, too. We have mostly returning teachers, and the teachers love it. They have a great time, it's a lot of fun, and it gives them a chance to stretch, too, because they're doing a little bit more concentrated writing for two and a half hours than when you have in the classroom, and the teachers love it, and they're all teachers, college-trained through the grant, so they've all had training in the writing process, so it worked out well.
And I have to say, in the middle school, because both you and I, that's our bailiwick, is middle school, but we had both a middle school ELA teacher and a high school, a Fitch High School teacher, co-teach the middle school group, and that portable was full of boys and girls who chose to come out for the whole week, you know, to do writing, and their level of thinking, and their poetry especially, was so depthful, and, oh, just amazing.
It was.
So, that was really pretty.
Thank you so much. Thank you for doing what you do, Val.
Oh, it's fun.
Thank you.
The district is very blessed to have you and have you continue on doing this, Ray.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thanks.
I'm passing out a couple things that actually, one, you've already seen before, so I had a couple things to share with you about the summer work that was done, and I wanted to let the community know that even though school is closed, teachers are hard at work with both professional development and curriculum writing. This year, we chose to take on areas of English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies, K-12, and we had teams of teachers working on this to review and revise what we call a board-approved curriculum map, and also to create pacing guides for every discipline. And so, for the COW, I'd like to come back with Dennis to show you the new website and this new amazing, dynamic site. I think some of you have seen it, I know Dr. Ackerman has had a little taste test of it and seen it, but it's really now available. I was able to show new teachers today where the curriculum is and how to get on it, and it is a work in progress, there's still areas that we need to add to. We need to make sure we can have teachers look at the assessment, the common assessments, but make sure they're secured so they're not, you know, out for all eyes. And we'll also have, on the community side, this will be all housed on the staff side, secured with passcodes, but on the community side, we'll have these revised documents. So, I, you know, Dr. Ackerman and I are going to work together to team up so they go through Curriculum Instruction Council, and we go through the Board of Ed Committee so that we can bring them to you. But it's all very exciting work. Professional development included English Language Learner training through Southern Connecticut State University, literacy intervention with forty teachers, primary grades, literacy specialist, and also middle school. And just last week, Amy Murphy, and actually, she spearheaded an inquiry-based instruction for all middle school teachers were invited to come and were paid for through the grant in preparation for their NYPD training, which is three days this week. So, on that document that I just handed you, you'll also see is three days this week. So on that document that I just handed you, you'll also see what's coming up for the thirtieth, which is our district-wide day. And some of you are kind of interested in that. So you can see that with middle school, they'll really focus on MYP and into the high school grades, nine and ten. And then the high school has another plan for others. In elementary, we have the phonics program through Teachers College coming in and having presentation by one of the authors. And so K and one will be focusing on that, and we'll be showing them the grammar site too and convention site, so they'll see the work that has been done. For grades two through five, they're gonna get half-day of English Language Arts, where they can actually do some work around grammar and plan some of those first lessons and conventions. And then for mathematics, they're gonna be also looking at their units and the pacing guide for the beginning of the year and get some actual training. We have an expert coming in in mathematics to work with them, and then they'll have some time for planning. So it should be a really good day for everybody. So we're very excited about that. I also gave you one of my favorite poems from John Steinbeck that I read or sent with the teachers. And Mark Russell has taken their pictures, and he's got something else up his sleeve for this year for the opening, you know, convocation that will be a slideshow with music and this poem. And I said, "This is what you should all aspire to be," John Steinbeck's teacher. And I'd just love to read it out loud. It won't take much time. It's one of my favorites.
You should have a cigarette.
"In her classroom, our speculations ranged the world. She aroused us to book-waving discussions. Every morning, we came to her carrying new truths, new facts, new ideas, cupped and sheltered in our hands like captured fireflies. When she went away, a sadness came over us, but the light did not go out. She left her signature upon us, the literature of a teacher who writes on children's minds. I've had many teachers who taught us soon-forgotten things, but only a few like her, who created in me a new thing, a new attitude, a new hunger. I suppose that to a large extent, I am the unsigned manuscript of that teacher, what deathless power lies in the hands of such a person." And so to be faced with fifty-seven new hires, and forty of those being certified staff, I get goosebumps, because I have met every single one. And I think our teams did a fabulous job. And I'm just so excited to have this new energy among us, and such quality teachers to join our already highly-qualified staff. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that we're gonna start with hello, the Sandy Hook Promise. We've decided to do it kind of as a K-12 initiative. The week is September twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth, and each school is gonna take it on in different ways. But the whole purpose of Start With His Hello is to build a culture of inclusion and that values each individual in the school. And it enables students to make a difference with their own peers. So I think that one of the things Fitch has done is something similar to that at the lunch hour, where you look for kids who might be isolated socially, and that you invite them in to the circle. And I think the more we can do that, what a better world we'll have. So we're really excited. It's a really easy thing to do. It's in the beginning of the year. We're saying hello anyway and getting to know each other. So that's gonna be kind of the launch of one of the activities that we'll do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You seem very much rejuvenated.
You did a lot of work.
You certainly did, ma'am. You did amazing.
Yeah.
So Business Manager Report. Hello, Mr. Deskin.
Hello. So you should all have object code summary, attachment number three. And this is our budget review of FY nineteen. Total budget of seventy-six, four sixty-eight, two thirty-nine. Our current estimate, not a lot, we're on budget. We're on track with most things at this point. It's early in the year. So for the most part, we're on track. The one driver of any difference really is replacement of some retired personnel has resulted in, we did budget some savings there, but it came in better than budgeted. So we're currently estimated to be under budget by one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand oh ninety-nine at this point.
Great. And the next is the Health Insurance Report.
No Health Insurance Report. Anthem has not yet released the June or July claims. They're still working through those, some sort of transition that they're going through.
Okay. Great. So Mr. Patrick, the Director of Buildings and Grounds, would you like to present?
Good evening. Yeah, I have three things to report on. The first would be the Groton twenty-twenty. And the Permanent School Building Committee is moving forward with that. We've been meeting, the staff has been meeting, along with Bob Austin LaFrance, has been meeting with the architects to talk about such things as technology and security and so on and so forth. And the next meeting will be actually talking about some of the details of the teaching spaces themselves. So they continue to move this project along. Over the summer, the next item would be the summer projects. I'd just like to let you know that as far as buildings and grounds is concerned, summer is not over yet. We're still working on some of these. So our biggest projects have been at the middle schools with the magnet programs going on. And we've had to reconfigure spaces, so on and so forth, adding windows through classrooms, all kinds of things through the magnet programs. We've also made some upgrades to sped spaces, special ed spaces at Westside Middle School due to the fact that the STEM program will be taking over their space. We've moved them to a new space, actually built some walls, and we'll be getting the CO for that just before school starts. So that should be taking place this week. We should get the CO for that certificate of occupancy.
For that new space?
For the new space, yeah. And the other thing that happened this summer is that we've implemented some new cleaning procedures that were recommended by OSHA. So while that actually took quite a bit of a learning curve for our custodial and maintenance staffs. And so we're finishing that stuff up now, so that schools will be ready and safe and clean for the kids and staff as they return. The third item on my list is the water testing update. Back before school got out, I made a trip up to the Department of Health and spoke with a person there, and also to Legally Health District. So we've been working in concert with those two organizations, with their recommendations on what we should do and how we should do it. And so just before school got out, we did water testing at both Clodchester School and Fitch High School, which had had some sites which were not to our liking the last time. So we did our testing at those two schools. So the first set of results, we got back, and there were some limited sites at each of those schools that were above the action level as required by EPA. And for instance, there were two lavatories at Fitch High School, two sinks and two lavatories at the high school, and also the fieldhouse at the high school. So we secured those water fountains and posted signs as appropriate. At Clodchester School, there was one fountain that tested positive, or above the action level. And so, again, we secured that or shut it off. And as was recommended by the Department of Health, we conducted some further testing in those two areas. And so we are now waiting for the results of that further testing that we did last week. I think it was last week when we did that further testing. And so we expect that those results to come back soon. We asked for a quick turnaround, so I'm hoping that we'll get those results back this week. And I guess that would be it, if there are any questions.
Any questions for Sue?
Thank you. So moving on to committee reports. Policy?
We did not meet in July. Am I wrong, or is my memory shot? We did not meet in July.
Because it fell on the holiday.
Yes, but we met.
In September, which fell on your.
Last week.
Yes.
And we will meet again. And we have two readings that we will talk about for action.
Awesome. Curriculum.
We met with the math teachers, and it was fabulous. They showed us their new way of presenting. And what we concentrated on was, how would, whatever method that we choose, how would we present that to the Board at a COW? So we're in the midst of deciding that. Now we have another meeting planned. Susan, do you want to add to that?
I just wanted to say that it really supports what Raymond told us tonight.
Yes.
That, you know, it's really relevant mathematics, so it's engaging to kids, and it's about their world. So, and especially for middle school math, that's the mathematics that we all use all the time, and it's so important. So it really lays the foundation also for algebra. And so I think they want to really, just, we wanted to support, even though the work has been done, K-12, there's so much work. So we felt like if we could start with the middle school, and then they could give you an example, similar to what the high school did last year. And we even talked about possibly videotaping a classroom, with permission, of course, and having that shown to get a snippet of what it looks like. So a couple of those teachers had volunteered that they would be happy to do that. So we could actually take you for a peek into a classroom.
I think the most significant thing was the interaction of the teachers and the thinking about how they're gonna present this, and just the camaraderie and the intellectual stimulation that came out of it. It was really wonderful.
Awesome. Financing Facility?
We met on August thirteenth. We reviewed salary and wage proposals for Central Office, and we voted to send those ideas to a future COW for discussion. Also reviewed the CIPs for FYI twenty. There was some concern about, on the part of Katrina Fitzgerald, who's not here tonight, by the way, because she's traveling, about making the history of the CIPs clear. For example, how many years have we been asking to re-crown the football field? How many years have we been asking to resurface the tennis courts? And that sort of thing, so that the new council will see the history of those requests. It's not something that just came up. And I understand there's some new concerns now about the fieldhouse that we discussed about the need for some structural look there, in terms of, that's why they weren't able to repaint it this year. And then we discussed options for the DOD supplemental, and asked Ken to look into using some of it to supplement textbooks, licensing, and technology upgrades.
Thank you. Any questions for either one of those three? All right. Lita, Learn?
Last Thursday, I attended an executive committee meeting followed by a bidding, building committee meeting concerning the Ocean Avenue Learning Academy, which is set to open late November. And they had a little, few setbacks because of asbestos, but things are moving forward, and it's gonna be a wonderful sight when it's all done. Beautiful. We had a walk-through with our hard hats, too, a couple of weeks ago. So it was good.
I want a picture of that Rita.
Yeah.
I want to see you in there.
Supposedly, there are some. I'll have to find out where.
So, Lita, can I just, I'm not quite sure how to go about this, but one of the things that I have been thinking individually as a board member is, we are, we've been hearing from this district, and actually, I'm sure from most other districts, and actually, there was a bill that actually was vetoed, but it's about students and safety and sort of understanding trauma and children's behavior and the increased sort of behavioral actions. And so, you know, one of the things that I've been having deep thoughts about is, is there a way that maybe Learn could spearhead, along with other districts, and kind of maybe either bringing in a large speaker who then can tweak curriculum or train teachers and staff around like a more trauma-informed process. But I sort of, I sort of understand Learn is a regional education support center or RASK, and that this supports the districts. And I didn't know if Learn was interested in doing that type of sort of initiative or not, but that was just something that I thought that I.
Yeah. We have a regular board meeting on September thirteenth, and I will definitely bring it forward, because we were going to be asking for topics at that meeting, so it'll be perfect. And so if you could send me an email with like a little bit more about the trauma and so forth, that would be great.
I will. I will do that.
No, it's kind of, I'm not speaking as a, I'm just speaking as a board member, not necessarily as the chair of the board, but this is just.
Sure.
For multiple reasons is an interest of mine. And so I do know that the Board of Ed, Town Council, and the RTM, and the City Council met on August one first or whatever.
August first week, yeah.
First week. And I know that we have a meeting coming up, and I'm sorry, I have not even looked at the minutes from the agenda, so I don't know. And I was, I was traveling during that day.
You were traveling.
Yeah.
I was there for, I think, and you were there, not feeling too well at that point.
And I missed it, because I had a concussion, so.
Yeah.
It was a good meeting. People, the RTM contributed, the city contributed, the Town Council contributed. We talked a little bit about Groton twenty-twenty. It was, it was good. It was balanced. Actually, Councilor Franco talked about the initiative, the city-town beautification project. So it was good. It was a good sharing of ideas among the four organizations.
Good. And also that we've changed the agenda, so the agenda actually has items pertinent to each one of the different committees. So I think that that helps as well. I know we're not having response from Trails, and Trails is on our Groton scholarship, and that Gretchen is not there, because she is traveling. Actually, she is vacationing in Montana, I think it is. But also, what's not on here is negotiations, that we have just finished our negotiation work with the secretaries, and that we are now in full war with our teachers in the teaching negotiation, with several meetings behind us, or two meetings behind us and some more ahead. And that our Town Council liaison is Mr. Altwater. So that's been nice to get to know him at a different level. So Action, I, Lita?
I had a question. We, those of us on negotiations received the Groton Public School Secretary's contract. This so far hasn't been, well, I did in my packet. So I was curious as to.
It hasn't been ratified yet.
It hasn't been ratified, because when they're, when they're back, this will be on our agenda in the future. That's why I just kind of wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The email came out.
Because I didn't get it.
Oh, you didn't get it?
No.
I didn't get it.
And nor did Andrew. So you were the special one.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna move on to the Action items. And the first one is the Consent Agenda. Where all matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. And so I will take a motion for acceptance of the Consent Agenda. So I'll go first.
And I'll second.
And those, Mary, has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, which would include the regular meeting minutes and special meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has so carried. We would like to say thank you to the Groton Lodge of Elks, two-one-six-three, who made a donation of five hundred dollars to the Food Service Department, PCC Structural Incorporated, who made a donation of two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars to the Food Service Department, and to Mr. and Mrs. William McDonough, who made a donation of five hundred dollars in the memory of Roberta Blenchek to the autism program. I think it's fifty. Did I say five hundred?
Yeah.
But I meant fifty. And thank you very much. Thank you, Rita. So the. So the new business, I'm actually going to move us down to number two, but we will go back to one, is, Jay, would you be willing to read number two, please? The motion?
Yes. A motion to approve the implementation of the Apex Learning Program.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, so good.
Adrian has the second. Do I have any more discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. We now have the Apex Learning Program. Yay.
A special thanks to our two friends tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Raymond, you did a great job, and you've got a future ahead of you in the service, so God bless.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, too. You are more than welcome to stay. You don't have to leave. Because it just gets even more exciting.
It's a little like boot camp.
All right. All right, and so, Rosemary, can I have you read number one motion?
The motion is to approve regarding the 2018 to 2019 tuition chart and the IB diploma program tuition.
All right, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, for discussion. Jay, do you have?
Excuse me. Ken has a little bit more information.
Okay.
That will, I think will highlight the discussion.
And Jay, did you have a discussion of this in your papers?
We did not.
Okay.
I, I think the reason for that is this.
Sorry, I just could not remember what.
This has been sort of a.
We discussed this, though.
We discussed it several times, yeah.
COW.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember where it was, so, sorry.
It's been around for a while, but anyway, Ken did some good work on it over the last couple of weeks, so.
Thank you.
And this is a bit expanded, so.
Yeah. So what, what was in your packets was the top section, the elementary, middle, high school, and the IB diploma program tuition rates. And I think there was a little chart in there and how that was figured out. But an area that, another area that we need to include is the special education program cost in consulting with our Director of Pupil Personnel, Denise Doolittle. It's important that we have these here, because there are cases where kids are placed by DCF or other reasons where we need to have these, these rates in place. And so I did consult with her, and we, we came up with these figures, which are similar to prior years, but, but are a little bit higher. But, and just so you are clear, the costs are all in. In the past, it's been, you know, regular education plus the special education come to a total, so these are just total numbers that you're looking at here.
And I, I don't believe for the additional services, I've ever seen the resource room added on there. Is that something new?
We've had, it's, it was called resources, and it has been on previous versions, where we, we think that this is the additional cost for a resource room, yes.
And I think that's mostly with staffing. So because we have special educators who have caseloads and work through the resource room and collaboratively in the classroom, there are additional costs with that service.
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
Why is there an increased fee for the IB diploma program at the high school as opposed to the regular high school tuition?
So, so the regular high school tuition was calculated without the IB costs included, and then we took those IB costs and divided it by the number of students to come up with a, with a per student just IB. And so that was added on, on top of the, the high school number.
So the number of students, that's about $3,000 more if a student above the regular high school diploma to the cost of the program per student is an additional 3,000?
Yeah.
For the diploma program?
For the, yeah.
This is not for children who are just taking, excuse me, children?
Well, it, it, it's for all the diploma program courses, but if you remember Dan speaking last year, we have 330 something students who take technically DP courses. And, and the reason we made the difference, the distinction for diploma program is because all ninth graders are taking NYPD, which is International Baccalaureate, and all 10th graders next year will be taking International Baccalaureate. But these, these are the costs for all the students who take courses that are offered in the 11th and 10th grade that could lead to the diploma program, not the diploma program itself, because that's actually a relatively small number of students.
Yeah, correct.
I, can you say that one more time?
Sure.
It could lead, who, what?
There are two kinds of International Baccalaureate courses now at the high school.
Yes, I, I know that, but I'm talking about the costs. Are you saying that this is for students who come in, in, that maybe want to go to the high school out of district from ninth grade?
No.
Into our school? Or is this only for 11th and 12th graders?
Correct. Only 11th and 12th graders. Any student who takes an IB class in 11th and 12th grade. Because NYPD, of course, is only 9th and 10th. So it's all the students who do the full diploma, and all the students who take 11th and 12th grade international baccalaureate courses.
Yeah, in, if I remembered it correctly, in the, the article that was in the paper today, I had a question, because it said that some colleges will give credit to kids who have the IB. Is that for the diploma?
Yes.
Yes, so.
Exclusively.
Yes, okay. Because that's, you know, if, if some kid could get half a semester or a whole semester off, that could save the parents 25 or 30,000 dollars.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And that's the same with any UConn course or advanced placement class also.
I didn't, I was not aware of that.
Yeah.
Because I don't.
Yeah, it's the same there. But not just there, but anywhere in the whole country.
Okay.
Not for the UConn courses, but the AP and the IB, yeah.
Any other conversation? Any discussion?
Do, do we have anybody that has interest in enrolling in the IB diploma program for $19,610?
Out of district?
Yes, out of district.
We had one, but, but to be truthful, it's taken so long, another, that person, but I'll reach out to that person tomorrow.
Jay?
I think the idea was we couldn't move forward with marketing it until we knew what it cost.
Right.
Yes. It's just kind of frightening to me to see that it's $3,000 more.
But I think when we compare it to other private schools, it's.
No, that's not what I mean. I, I'm talking about, you know, that Fitch also offers the AP and the UConn courses without an additional cost for $16,504. It's the additional cost of an IB diploma program. That's my concern.
I think the difference is that most public schools offer those already. I think this is what sets us apart. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, most high schools offer AP. So there wouldn't be any real difference about them wanting to leave their district.
Right, yeah.
And I think most of them offer some sort of early credit to UConn.
That's right.
So I think this was what distinguishes our program.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the 2018 to 2019 tuition chart and the IB diploma program tuition, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. We should make sure we include special. Do I do an addendum to that? Well, it says tuition chart.
Okay.
So charts, so we just.
So charts, yes.
Yes, and. Lee, would you be willing to read the motion for number three, please?
I will. Discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of Policy P 6172.3, homeschooling, Attachment 7, and this is a first reading.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the first reading of Policy 6172.3 homeschooling? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Rosemary has seconded. Can we have discussion or explanation on this?
I can too, I, well, we can both, actually. This was a spirited, and it took us a couple of policies to come up with this. We are required to do this. We have not done it before. We, we talked a lot about this. And what you see there is what we actually must do. The amazing part is what we cannot do. So I, we were very interested in this, and I think that you all will be too for the first time.
We've always had a process for when parents come to us and want to homeschool their children, but we didn't have a written policy. So this is a new policy, but it's a law, Section 10, 184 of the Connecticut Genuine, Connecticut General Statutes that describes the duties of a parent in their homeschooling, and to have, make sure that parents are aware of their responsibility, and that they have to notify, they shall notify the superintendent of schools, and then filing a notice of intent. So behind it in the appendix are things such as the letter from the Pupil Personnel Services that talks about, you know, the statute itself and how we can support a family. And it also has the notice of intent from the family that we just really cleared off the language a little bit, that the parent has to sign off on, you know, what's required and what they will be teaching at home. And then there's also instruction of a student at home, and the acknowledgement page with the parent signs, and then Dr. Briner would sign. So we would collect this. They, there are things that they cannot do. They cannot participate in sports or after-school activities, that they're not part of the school district. They basically have to unenroll and, you know, and testify that they're going to homeschool their children. So they really don't receive, you know, special education. It would be as if they were going to a private school in their own home. So we feel good about getting that into print. And I know that, I've talked to Dr. Ackerman, and she does have some, you know, some editing for me. So I'll review that with her and with the committees, so that we can, when we bring it the second time around, there might be a couple little adjustments.
Okay, definitely.
And we did change one thing, because we changed the word from citizenship to civics, because it spared most of us to think that people would actually have to show that they are citizens, which is not what this is about.
Well, we updated the language.
We did, a little bit, yeah.
And added a great deal of language on the first page.
Thank you for your hard work on this. Is there any other discussion? This is the first reading?
I, I just had a question. I'm wondering, Susan, if you would read to us so that parents out there that do homeschool, some of the things that they cannot participate in, such as, you know, among those programs, so that people understand in the district, if you're going to homeschool your child, you're not going to be able to be part of any type of extracurricular activities.
Right. So children educated at home are considered to be non-public school students and are not part of the system's educational responsibility, and are not part of the school system. Any student being homeschooled is ineligible to participate in any courses, programs, or activities offered to students enrolled in the Groton Public Schools. And that's by law. It's not just our decision to do it that way. The Groton Public School system will provide only such services that are required by law. Among those programs, services and activities that will not be available to homeschool children include participating in National Honor Society, extracurricular activities such as band, interscholastic or scholastic sports, field trips, and foreign language instruction. Those are just ideas or samples of what they can't participate in.
And they don't get a chrome book?
And they don't get a chrome.
But there are families that do choose to homeschool their children.
Oh, yes, no, there are quite a few, yeah.
And they, yeah, and they, they cannot get a diploma from us.
Right. They also don't receive, yeah, but they receive like a national homeschool diploma, I would think.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the first reading policy of P 6172.3 homeschooling, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. Rita, would you be willing to read the motion for number four, please?
Yes. To approve as a first reading Policy P 5141.4, reporting of child abuse and neglect.
Can I have a second?
Second.
That'd be from Rosemary. Discussion, please?
So this was actually a policy that was written a while ago. I'm like looking for the exact date, and I think we've included the regulations as well.
2013.
2013. So there was, the language in green is in the updated laws, so that we had to add that. And then we took out in red what was not required. I know that, for instance, as defined by state law, all school employees are mandated reporters, including, but not limited to, the superintendent, administrators, teachers, substitute teachers, school counselors, psychologists, social workers, and licensed behavioral analysts, nurses, physicians, paraprofessionals, and coaches. So really, anybody employed by the school is a mandated reporter. We do mandated reporter training. We just did it, Denise just did it for all of our new teachers that met today for their orientation. We have a whole repertoire of mandated examples of PD that are required, from bloodborne pathogens to the DCF requirements, that we give teachers time to do kind of online learning with it. And then the principals will often incorporate it into their first faculty meetings and to have discussion about those things. So that is required by law. And then to fill out the DCF Form 136. And I know in speaking to Dr. Ackerman, she found some things that we probably should look at even more closely in the regulations that we will, and we can come back to. But this was, like I said, written in 2013, and I think there's even more things that we can fine-tune a little bit in the language to make it better for when we come back again.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those approve the first reading of the Policy P 5141.4, reporting of child abuse and neglect, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Abstain? I'm going to abstain, because I did not have, I, I did not read this fully. I got through like the first three pages, so I'm abstaining. Okay. All right, I'm sorry, what?
The one that, the concern that I had was, I have this in my packet. It's policy number 5145.12, and it's search and seizure. And that's the one I had the real concerns about. I don't want to have that.
Oh, you didn't get this one?
Say what?
Well, we've already, that, the search and seizure one has already.
It was in my packet, I don't know why. But anyway, that's the one that.
I'll get you the newest addition, because maybe some of those things have been worked out, but I'll give you what had passed. Joan, if you can find the search and seizure one that we finally resolved.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. All right, and number five is the one we are going to be moving into executive session. And so I'm going to move that we just kind of finish the rest of our meeting, because our executive session is really just going to be board and no other personnel. So if you can look in, just move it through, and, and then do the executive session. So letters of communication. Jay, do you have, do you have stuff under that?
No, it's been quiet.
Okay. Adrian?
Not what is our communicate, or communication, but things that we did. Is this the type of that?
Yeah.
Well, I looked at the, the board notes from last time, and it looks like I went through two, went to two little things, and that was it. No, I went to all those things that everybody else went to. I just forgot to say that. But I did go to the Mystic Marina for the fundraiser for the band going to England. That was fabulous. It was such fun. Let's see. Negotiations, here's a problem. Negotiations are scheduled on Thursday, and so are the permanent school committee meetings. So I won't. so I won't be able to go to those while I'm going to negotiations.
Okay.
So that's, and I went to the summer writing, that was fabulous, as Val said, and of course, the Apex, the thing about the, one of the Apexes is that we were able to talk about, to talk with students as they were doing their lessons, and, you know, talk with them about what was going, that was good in terms of the program and what might need to be looked at again. It was a really fascinating time.
Rosemary?
Since our last big meeting, I have attended Sound Community Services Board meeting, two GAS meetings. I went to and represented for GAS with the Mystic Art Festival, both rainy flooding days, where we painted rocks, had student, young kids paint rocks. And I went to my first Sandy Hook Promise meeting, and so I'm really, really very excited about what they're going to be doing.
When's the next one?
Sandy Hook Promise? It's the, I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
I went on the 21st, so it's a month from the 21st.
Okay.
On a Tuesday, so I think the third Tuesday. And I attended the GAS Mothers Against Drunk Driving and Grotton Town Police Department fundraiser, which was all these cars that were very cool, and I hope they raised a lot of money. And I helped start the bottle recycling thing, so, which is...
Wonderful.
I'm thrilled about it.
All while you had a concussion.
All while I had a concussion, yes.
Lee?
I didn't do much of anything this summer. I feel like such a lazy person. I'm sorry. You weren't too.
Yes, join the club.
All right, Rita.
I also attended the Fitch High School Band fundraiser, which was great, and I had a couple of phone calls, these are directed to Dr. Briner. This is concerning the reduction of the two buses for the multicultural region at Magnet School, and if there was any thought about changing any of it, and my question was, why were the buses, some of them redirected to the Science and Technology School as opposed to the multicultural Magnet School? What I understood you say that night at the meeting at the high school.
Yeah, you were there. Well, what we did was, we adjusted the budget to, for the buses to reflect the money that we get from the state. So enough money comes to provide two full buses for RMMS and enough for one and a third to go to New London. So we simply adjusted it, so, all the, but it did, it did go from three buses servicing RMMS down to two.
To two. And that has been, I think, a hardship for some of the people, especially the people that live in the city of Grotton, and the students, and the Grotton students that attend the Isaac School.
The Isaac School, I think, we're pretty close, if not there, to providing a bus for those children, but they also will be at hubs. But this is, yeah, I mean, the simple answer to your question is, about half of the money comes in for RMMS, split more than half, about 55%, and 45% of the money comes for the New London students, but about 90% of the money was allocated to RMMS in the past, which was, you know, fair.
But I thought that the Isaac students were on the buses for...
Right.
Because their proximity is so close.
Right, right. But because we're going from three buses to two buses, we didn't have enough room. Not sufficient.
So then how are you resolving?
We think we may have an additional bus because of the Magnet School grant to allow us to help out the Isaac School.
And what about the multicultural Magnet School? Where the hubs wouldn't be so far apart.
Well, the hubs are established, I think, we certainly don't want to change that now because that's, of course, led to chaos last year. So we had the meeting in the spring, we've established the hubs, and I think parents are adjusting to that.
And how many students from Isaac would be on, would be on the bus? Is it a big bus?
About 40.
Forty students.
Well, forty students are eligible for transportation, yes.
So then we would be having four buses or five?
No, just two.
Just two.
Two, Sam, am I right, the two buses are taking care of RMMS?
So I think, instead of having, instead of having the communication, we should probably, if this is an issue, then we should probably move this into a referral and have this...
Well, the only problem is that these parents need an answer before school starts.
Well, they have, they have their answer.
But do the Isaac students have their answer?
They do. I think, at least I spoke to them.
Have they contacted them?
All right, I am, I am part of the, obviously, the lazy club of the Lee and the Jay, and so I don't have a lot of communication. I do not, I was traveling during the fundraiser, but I think, Dan, I think we'll have to have birthday crowns on when we do the run at Bluff Point, but I'll be walking, honey, I know you're not going to run. So we'll have to, like, we'll have to sync on that one. Okay. And so listed is our, it looks like we're back, we're back rocking and rolling with the, our meeting nights, and I do have the suggestive agenda items around looking at the, at least beginning the conversation about the ROTC, and then also a way of understanding what's happening in the Magnet Schools and understanding the programs, and that just probably would be good for us anyways, as we, as we get to roll that out. That's what I have.
I think we need to put on the event, agenda about the thing that we're having on Wednesday, the 29th, I believe.
Oh, a convocation?
Convocation, is that?
Yeah, that was on our board calendar, not this one.
Okay, yeah.
It's an early day, 7:30, we're a little late.
It's a bit, it's a bit brief, because we need, we need time to do training, so it's 7:30 date, coffee, 8 to 8:45 comments.
Convocation.
And then off to, it's sort of a compact schedule, but so 8:45, 8:50, we should be out of there. It'd be great to have you.
All right. Right, so, anything else? So I would like to have someone give the motion to go into executive session.
Andrea?
And then seconded by Lee, and the motion is to go over the superintendent's contract, and we will not require any other staff members present.
All right.